Good evening to you all and welcome to our meeting this evening. Before I formally call us to order, I want to make just a couple of introductory-type comments. Number one, which I think is known to most of you, we have a mask policy that indicates that the staff and audience members who are not fully vaccinated must wear face coverings during the council meeting. Fully vaccinated individuals are not required to wear face masks. All persons should continue to practice social distancing when possible in council chambers. So be aware of that if you will. Also, I would like to mention that this evening, because at least one of our council members is participating remotely, the meeting will be conducted as a remote meeting pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 166A-19-24 as amended by Session Law 2021-35. The public may appear in person or may access the remote meeting via the live stream at So those were preliminary bits of information I needed to share with you. At this time, I will call the meeting formally to order and I will ask the town clerk if she will call a roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
President.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Vance?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum and I would like to note that Mayor Protem Behringer does have an excused absence this evening, so she will not be with us. And so in her absence, I'm going to ask those of you who can and will, if you will, stand with me and let's honor our country with the pledge of allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you, and you may be seated. We're privileged this evening to have come and lead us in our invocation, a person that is known to many of you, and that's Mr. Louis Long. He's one of our police chaplains, and he's graciously agreed to come and open our meeting with our invocation. Welcome Reverend Long, and thank you for your service to our police department.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's a privilege to be here. Pray with me as you're led. Grace heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to be here. We thank you for this meeting. We thank you, Lord, for those people that are concerned and involved with the community and the well-being of the community. We ask tonight that you bless this meeting, give the mayor and the council wisdom in decision-making and guidance as well, that you bless each presentation, and that your name might be honored and glorified. We thank you for everyone that's here and those that are watching, and we just ask your blessing in Christ's name. Amen.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Long. We appreciate that a whole bunch. Before I answer, well, I need to get to our petitions and comments, which is the next item on our agenda. Probably won't read all of the introduction, but this is a portion of our meeting where we receive comments from the public on items not included on the agenda. Interested parties can choose to appear live on the virtual meeting platform or provide written comments that will be shared with council. An online form is available, and for more information, you can go to a site there. Should I cite that? No, okay. "The council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up before the..." Excuse me, "during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town official or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda." So at this time, if there... Madam Clerk, were there any persons who signed up with you to speak during petitions and comments?
We did not have anyone sign up, but I received an email from a gentleman who said that he would like to speak. I don't know that he is present.
Okay. So if you were the person who sent that, you may come forward at this time, and/or if there are other persons who desire to speak at this time, I will recognize you. No? Okay. All right. No one? All right. Okay, well, thank you very much, and we'll move right along. Counsel, before I ask you to adopt the agenda, again, let me explain both to us and to the public that since one of our council members, that is, Mr. Matthews, is participating virtually, as a result, the meeting will be conducted as a remote meeting pursuant to state law. So whenever Mr. Matthews cannot be seen on the screen, he will identify himself by name prior to asking questions, participating in deliberations, or making motions, proposing amendments, and voting, and all votes will be conducted by roll call. So you'll see that happen in just a moment. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion from council for the adoption of the agenda as you have it presented to you.
Mr. Mayor, we add an item to the agenda under new and old business, Item 4, discussion of the town's traffic calming policy.
Without objection from any council members, we will add Item 4.
And I move that we adopt the agenda. With that addition, on under new and old business.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So thank you, Mr. Singleton, and the second was by Mr. Vance. So with that addition, we have a motion before us, and so we'll call for a vote. If you're in... Well, if you're in favor, we'll ask you to answer to the roll call.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. The motion passes and the agenda is adopted. So the next item of business, I believe I see some folks here anxious for this portion of our agenda, and that is, under presentations, we have a recognition of service and retirement of, again, a person that's known to many of us, Mr. Walter Meyer. So I'll recognize our town manager Rodney Dickerson, who will do the honors.
All right. Mr. Mayor, town council, it is my honor to recognize Walt Meyer for his 24 years of service to the town of Garner. He's announced his retirement, so he will be leaving us soon and going out and having fun and doing whatever retirees do. Maybe I'll find out one day. So we're going to have you come up here, and Chief Benzai is going to talk about you for a little while. So Lieutenant Meyer, he joined us in 1997 as a police officer. He served as a school resource officer at Garner Magnet High School. He was a strong mentor to students and the staff, has a lot of good stories, sure he'd be willing to share at some point. Served as a narcotics investigator and been very dedicated to solving crimes. He was promoted to sergeant in 2012 and also served as a patrol supervisor. Then he was later promoted to lieutenant in 2015. He's a founding member of the department's crisis negotiating team and currently serves Not anymore. Got rid of them. And the number-one show at the time was Seinfeld, and the biggest hits were from the Spice Girls, as a team's commander. Very active in the department's challenge camp, and that's the camp where we take a Puff Daddy, and Mariah Carey. group of young kids to the mountains and do some team building and just try to get You got to pick one. All right, all right. them on the right track. So he's very active in that. In all seriousness, we have been very fortunate to have officer like Lieutenant Meyer on When we used to do that program, I'm not sure if we still do that.
We still do it.
We still have that? the staff, and he's just been great, been a great mentor to a lot of the younger officers,
Lieutenant Meyer is not quite as involved.
Okay, all right. And also very involved in the PAL program for the town's youth population. and I've enjoyed just talking to him about various things over the years, and we're really Very humble, always puts others first before himself, and we've been very fortunate to going to miss him, and I'm going to call up Chief Benz to say a few words about him.
Mayor, I was adding it up a little while ago, and after the last 12 months, we've
have him as a police officer with the town of Garner. So I said 1997, that's a while back.
actually had probably close to 135 years of experience walk out our front door with retirements
So just to put things in perspective, hit movies at that time were Titanic, Men in
over the last year, so we got a few more coming up this year.
Black, and Jurassic Park: Lost World.
So certainly it's a loss. I'd like to echo the words of Mr. Dickerson.
You got to pick one.
One of the best things that someone could say to us as we close out a long and distinguished
Men in Black.
Okay, Men in Black, all right.
career is that we made a difference in the Garner community.
Detroit Red Wings were Stanley Cup champs, and I know we have a lot of hockey fans in
As Mr. Dickerson said, he served as a dare officer, teaching dare to our elementary
the police department, Hurricanes fans, so I don't know if you're one of them, so I don't know if you want to hear about that.
school children. I guess that was almost 20 years ago now.
Beanie Babies were the most popular holiday item, so how many do you have?
He still sees these kids connected, that he connected with, he'd come up to him, not
Nine.
to make him feel old, but he... We introduce them to their kids at this point, so we've been around a little while. Walter was in SRO both our middle schools and our high schools. He's one of our first school resource officers in the middle schools. He actually bounced back and forth for many years before he went over to the high school. We always joke, as we move up in the profession of policing, we're no longer as police officers in the typical sense. As we move up in rank, we have less of an impact outward on the community and more of an impact on the folks that work within the police department, the younger officers and the folks that we mentor and we lead. And I'll just say that Walter has had tremendous impact on the community as a police officer through many of the years, but he's also had a tremendous impact on the officers within the department, the things that he's done, the things he's led, as Mr. Dickerson talked about, between the crisis negotiators and just the many, many programs that Walter's been involved in over the years. Certainly, the challenge camp program was one of the biggest. We affected so many kids that grew up, that and the middle school and the high school SRO program, so many kids, and that's really where it is impacting. I think we make a more of an impact when we impact the kids than we do when we impact the adults. So he's been a valuable leader in our department. I can go on and on with stories, some that he would probably rather than me not tell. I got lots. But if you know Walter, you also know that he also has never been a loss for worse. His enthusiasm and willingness to jump and lead, to do his part, will certainly be missed. Walter, I know you won't be... You're coming back to kind of help us with some fleet work, but I do want to say that to have a great retirement, and you certainly will be missed.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Do it. Okay.
Before we call you up, I did want to present you with this. Share this with whoever you'd like in the town. Congratulations on your retirement. I would just invite you to say a couple of words.
My colleagues will probably know that I usually don't keep things short, but I will tonight. It's pretty simple. I appreciate the opportunity, but to have a career here at Garner, it's meant a word to me. It's something I'm going to miss, and it's been truly my honor to serve, and thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And Mr. Meyer, I promised to be short as well. That's about as short as it gets, I guess, but... And I'm going to ask these council members to certainly make comments, but let me, as mayor and formerly as a council member, thank you for your service to this town. You've done that honorably and well. I've never heard any bad reports of Officer Meyer, and I suspect you may have had at least one or two of my kids. I have two in the dare program. I don't know exactly which school you were in, but serving in that was commendable, and all the work that you did was important. And I wish you well in retirement. I encourage you to find other things that you're interested in. I'm sure you will, that you want to engage and spend your time in. The difference will be, this is something of your choosing, and perhaps you can choose your own schedule a little better than you have with your regular work. But I commend you and wish you well, and I'm proud to know you as one of our police officers. So with that, I'll recognize any council members who'd like to make any comments, starting with Mr. Singleton.
Thank you for your 24 years, but I reckon more importantly, thank you for working with the young people, the dare program and also the SRO at both middle school and high school. That has a definite impact on my kids. I've got one of these arising seniors, the other two have graduated, and they talk about the impact that the officers had, both in middle school and in the high school. So thank you for those many years of service.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, I'll recognize you, sir, for any comments you want to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations. Enjoy your retirement and play golf as efficient as you can what you like to do. Thank you for what you're doing to make our kids a lot better and getting to start off in a good way in life. You'll be missed, but don't be missed physically. Come back see us all the time. Appreciate you.
Okay, down here, Mr. Dellinger and Mr. Vance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your service. It's clear from your record that you've gravitated towards the youth, and that makes all the difference for this town, and I appreciate your commitment to community and culture, especially within the department. Thank you.
Mr. Vance?
Officer Meyer, I cannot say anything more than what they've already said. Thank you so much for your service and your time and for what you've done for the young people and as a SRO officer, and really hope that your retirement is one in which you will be a very restful and peaceful one and lacking of all stress. Thank you very much.
And maybe just before you go, I wouldn't put you on the spot, but if you have some important people with you tonight that you'd like to make known to the rest of us, feel free to do that.
Oh, thank you. My wife, Cartia. There's no way you get through a career of doing this and the schedules we work, family support, and my youngest daughter, Grace, and my oldest daughter, Kate.
Thank you, sir. I know you're quite proud of them, and we're pleased that you could be here with your husband and father. I know you're proud of him. So hey, stop back in to see us from time to time, and we'll be glad to hear how things are going with you in retirement.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Give him one more round of applause, maybe. Okay. I believe that's the only presentation I had on my agenda, so we will now move to the consent agenda. Counsel, you're aware there are two items there, and so unless there's any change to be noted or requested, I would ask for a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Some moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, and so we will ask you to vote by roll call. Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Motion passes, so the consent agenda is approved, and thank you for that. Okay, next item is R, public hearings, and I should note that the annexation hearings are legislative public hearings and do not require sworn testimony and pursuant to state law, and written comments for public hearings must be submitted at least 24 hours prior to the start of the meeting. Interested persons who wish to speak on a public hearing may sign up with the town clerk. Madam Clerk, again, with anyone who signed up in advance. So at this time, I'll recognize Mr. David Banford for our first item, Annexation 27-07, Tryon Point. Mr. Banford.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We've got four annexations before you tonight for public hearing. The first one is for Tryon Point subdivision. This is case number 20-07. This is a vicinity map of the project site located south of the intersection of Creach and Sinnerford Road in North Garner. The site is approximately 31.39 acres. It's zoned residential 12. And this project, Tryon Point, was approved in October 2020 for 40... for 54 residential single-family lots, and this project will connect to water and sewer, so the annexation petition is required, and they are moving forward with construction and probably will turn in subdivision flats soon for review to record the lots. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Banford and his presentation? Okay.
No questions.
Hearing none? Okay, thank you. Were there any other persons who were going to speak to this issue? I'm not aware of any. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we'll call for a motion for the adoption of the ordinance 2021-5050.
Councilmember Singleton?
Excuse me, let me get a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
We've got the ordinance 2021-5049.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
Same.
Okay. All right, motion made and properly seconded. If you now favor this, will you answer yes or aye as a clerk calls your name?
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you very much. Mr. Banford will go to the next item.
The next annexation case is for Georgia's Landing subdivision. This is case number 21-08, and this is a vicinity map of the project and annexed site. It's located on the east side of Fayetteville Road, northwest of Swift Creek, and south of Simpkins Road. The annexed area includes 143 acres of the site plus approximately 1.15 acres of right-of-way directly across from the frontage of the annexed area on the east side of 401, so this would connect and be part of the contiguous town limits. Georgia's Landing was approved in December 2019 for 420 residential units. This site will connect to town water and sewer, so annexation is a requirement, and it was... it's currently zoned planned residential conditional use District 6. So I'll be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Counsel members, a question for Mr. Banford on this annexation proposal. Any?
No questions.
Hearing none? Okay. Just a quick comment, David. The acreage of this is one of our larger annexations of recent times. Am I right on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, counsel, a motion is in order for this particular item. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the annexation of ordinance 2021-5050.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and properly seconded. Unless there are any further questions, I'll ask you to vote by answering the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, the motion properly passes and is approved. Item number three, Mr. Banford.
The next annexation case is for a project on Raynor Road and White Oak Road, case number 21-09. This came in as Raynor Road planned residential development. The annexed area is approximately 79.57 acres, and this site's located on the east side of Raynor Road, directly south of White Oak Business Park. Raynor Road planned residential development was approved on July 20, 2020 for 338 residential units, and this project will connect to water and sewer, so annexation is required. The zoning is planned residential development conditional use District 9. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Banford. Questions by counsel, by anybody? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'll ask for a motion on adopting this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, please, we adopt the ordinance 2021-5051.
Thank you.
Made and properly seconded. If you approve the motion, please vote yes or aye when the roll is called. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, the motion properly passes and is approved. Item number three, Mr. Banford.
The next annexation case is for a project on Raynor Road and White Oak Road, case number 21-09. This came in as Raynor Road planned residential development. The annexed area is approximately 79.57 acres, and this site's located on the east side of Raynor Road, directly south of White Oak Business Park. Raynor Road planned residential development was approved on July 20, 2020 for 338 residential units, and this project will connect to water and sewer, so annexation is required. The zoning is planned residential development conditional use District 9. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Banford. Questions by counsel, by anybody? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'll ask for a motion on adopting this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, please, we adopt the ordinance 2021-5051.
Thank you.
Made and properly seconded. If you approve the motion, please vote yes or aye when the roll is called. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, and that is likewise approved. Mr. Banford, I believe you have one more item at least. Is that right?
Yes, sir. This is Annexation Case 21-10. The name of this project is Caddy North, and this map shows the project boundary outlined in yellow. It's on the north side of Caddy Road, on the east side of Fayetteville Road, north of the McCullers Shopping Center. The annexed area includes 18.37 acres plus approximately 1.62 acres within the entire right-of-way of Caddy Road along the entire frontage of the site. Caddy North was approved as Rand Village Apartments on January 19, 2021 for 264 residential units. This project will connect to town water and sewer, so annexation is required. The property is zoned multifamily 2, conditional use District 224. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Again, thank you, Mr. Banford. Questions by council members? Anybody? Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2021-5052.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion made, properly seconded by Mr. Singleton. So if you approve the motion, please vote yes or aye when your name is called. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes and is approved. Thank you, counsel, and thank you, Mr. Banford. Okay, as we go into the next section of our public hearings, under special use permits, I need to make some statements as it relates to quasi-judicial hearings, which is what we're moving into next. All persons who intend to testify must be sworn and testify under oath. All persons who have standing to participate must indicate whether or not he or she consents to the remote meeting prior to speaking or giving testimony. So I'll ask you that question if you come up to testify. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing, so I must ask council members, do any of you have a fixed opinion prior to this hearing that is not subject to change, or have you had any ex parte communications? Have you had... Do you have any close familial business or other association or relationships with an affected person, or have a financial interest in the outcome of the hearing? If that is the case, with any council members, you should indicate it at this time. Anybody? Okay. All right. This is a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on education, training, and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during the hearing and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of the hearing. So if you are here this evening and expect to give testimony in this particular case, please, if you will, see the clerk, and she will have you sworn in before we start further proceedings. I think there must be a number of you who plan to do that.
Mr. Mayor, are you swearing just this case at this time?
Excuse me. I guess I was, but I guess, yeah. Well, okay, yeah, it'd probably be easier just to have everybody sworn at the same time. Yeah, if you're going to testify in either one of the cases, be sworn. Yeah. Thank you.
We have a sign-up sheet, so I'm not sure which project. Oh, my goodness. So I'm just going to do it, and then you guys can sign in as you walk by. How about that? Okay. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly, sincerely, truly declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you all, and we will now take up the matter of special use SUP SP 2103. And I believe, Ms. Jones, you are our presenter for the town. I'm going to formally open this hearing and recognize Ms. Allison Jones, our planner. Should I ask her the question, I guess, if she, yeah, do you, you've been sworn, and do you consent to the remote hearing that we're having?
Yes, I forgot.
Thank you. All right, I recognize you, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to present US 70 Industrial Phase III Special Use Permit SUP SP 2103. The applicant is Allenire LLC. The owner of the parcel is Garner Industrial 1. It is located at 2,000 Garner Business Park. Proposed use is light industrial flex space. The current zone is split zones, half of the, I won't say half, but some of the portion of the property is on service business, and the other portion is on light industrial I-1. The setbacks for service business are 35 feet, rear 25 feet or zero, side 025, corner lot is 35 feet. For industrial, light industrial, excuse me, is 50 feet, front setback, rear is 050 feet, side is 025 feet, and the corner is 35 feet. There was a neighborhood being held at Mount Mariah Baptist Church at 6:30 PM on Monday, excuse me, on May 25, 2021. The meeting minutes, so to speak, were in your staff report. And here's the overall site of the plan. This is proposed building elevations. Parkland open space are not required for non-retraditional developments. Landscaping and buffer requirements, the tree coverage, required minimum coverage is 11%. Preservation provided was 5%, and the remaining 6% accomplished through new plantings. The perimeter buffer on the north is 25 feet, the west side is 45, and the east is 25 feet. The street buffer is a 15-foot buffer along Garner Business Park Drive, and the street trees are being provided 41 every 40 feet as required. Site lighting meets both the requirements of the UDO and staff policy regarding LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and a warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 K. Parking for this site is based off of, the office space is based on one per every 300 square feet of floor area, and parking for the warehouse is based on one per every 5,000 square feet of floor area. Required to have 142 parking spaces, they are providing 155 for this site. The inspectors department, together with fire department, has reviewed and preliminary approved this plan. There are no documented flood planes, news river buffers, or wetlands on this site. Stormwater management. US 70 Industrial is a commercial development site that is not located within a watershed protection area. This site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen, as well as water quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. This development plan proposes a stormwater retention pond to treat impervious surface for nitrogen and water quantity requirements to ensure stormwater requirements are met as a part of this development. A nitrogen offset payment is also required for this development. This parcel will be connected to the City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer Systems at the US 70. Infrastructure sidewalks. US 70 is located in the north of US 70 East, between Guy Road and the future I-40, excuse me, I-540. Phase III of this development includes a fourth building that will be accessed by two driveways off of Garner Business Park Drive, a cul-de-sac constructed with the previous phases of development that's going to be extended approximately 730, excuse me, 730 feet north, sorry. After sufficient review and plan revision, staff finds this project as now proposed may be considered consistent with the regulations of the UDO, so long as the following project specific conditions are met. Prior to the issuance of building permit, the payment of public utility fees shall be paid to the City of Raleigh. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, a nitrogen offset payment is required, and the plat recognition after construction approval, prior to building permit for new easements proposed for the City of Raleigh Wardline easements, and the stand ter and sewer easement too as well. Are there any questions for staff? And also, the applicant is here too, if there are any questions for the applicant as well.
Okay, and we probably will want to hear from the applicant, but counsel, I'll contact each one of you in person, and begin with Mr. Singleton. Do you have any questions for Ms. Jones?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dellinger?
Just a question on the zoning. Is the proposed site plan development consistent with the split zoning of the site?
Yes, I asked the, only, the major difference between service business and I-1 would be outside storage is permitted in I-1 and not in service business, and I asked the applicant whether there be any outside storage being proposed, and they said no.
And the buffer requirements are also different for those two zoning districts?
Buffer requirements are based on the use.
But the setbacks are different? So setbacks for service business are 25, or 35, 25, 25, 35, and light industrial 50, 50, 25, 35? So is it compliant on, for each of those respective zoning districts?
Yes, sir. I believe so.
Let me look at it. I'll pass on Mr. Vance.
Okay, okay. Mr. Vance, any questions?
Questions.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, any questions for Ms. Jones?
No, sir.
Okay. Before we ask for, did you want to circle back at all, Mr. Dellinger?
What confirmation on that the setbacks are consistent, given the zoning? Are they? So it fits with both zoning styles, which the site plan have? Okay, thank you.
Okay, all the questions for Ms. Jones. Anybody else for the town? I assume not.
I don't think so.
Okay. The applicant has some witnesses that they wish to present at this time, is that correct?
I don't think that, well, I'm not sure they're going to present, but if you have any questions for the applicant, I just want to let you know he, they are here.
Okay, all right. Well, let me pose that question to counsel. You've heard the town's presentation. Any questions for the applicant that you'd like to hear from? Mr. Vance?
Questions.
Mr. Dellinger? Okay, Mr. Singleton?
No, sir.
Mr. Matthews?
No, sir.
Any question for the applicant? Okay. So are there other persons here who wish to speak in favor of this particular application? And/or are there persons here who desire to speak, who may have a differing opinion about this, this proposal? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Mr. Attorney, I believe I can close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, counsel, close the public hearing and call for a motion on this special use application.
Mr. Mayor, I find the application SUP SP 2103 meets the town eight criteria for special use permits identified in Article 392D. Therefore, I move that the town council approve SUP 2103, US 70 Industrial Phase III, with the three site specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Second.
Okay, thanks, sir. And Mr. Singleton offered a second for that, so counsel, unless there's any questions before we vote, I will ask you, if you favor the motion, to vote aye when your name is called. If you do not, vote no. So Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Okay, again, thank you, counsel, and thank you, Ms. Jones. And to the applicant, that has been approved, so you can certainly move forward at this time, I'm sure. We look forward to, to this project becoming, coming to fruition, I guess I should say. Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is item six, Special Use Permit SUP SP 2005. And I should note that this is a hearing that was continued from June 22. So the witnesses do not need to repeat their prior testimony, but if you were a witness then and you have additional information you'd like to provide, you can do that during this hearing. So let me see, who is presenting for the town on this? Anybody? Okay. Ms. Jones?
So like you said, this project was tabled from the June 22 meeting, and staff is here. If you have any questions for staff, but the applicant is here to answer those questions that were from the June 22 meeting.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Jones at this time? Okay. Apparently there are none. All right. Applicant is going to offer up any additional information? Okay, please. The attorney? Okay, if you will, sir, as you come up, please give your name and address, and I will ask you if, if you've been sworn and you consent to the remote hearing.
Yes, sir, Mayor, I have.
Okay.
I do.
Okay.
My address at my residence is 104 Tappedin Court, Garner. Then, address at my business is 922 US Highway 70 West. I know that I had expressed my concern over my driveway being removed. I'd like to say, under further review, thanks to Mr. Bamford and other people that were involved in the project, Mike Lewis, and I was able, we were able to come to, I think, a resolution. And I think, according to my insurance, property insurance agent, he states that I'd probably be in the best interest to, to let this thing go through. So that's where I stand. If you guys have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ward, I appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Steve Ward?
I'm curious.
Okay.
I'm curious what your insurance agent said.
If you look at, well, sure, thank you for asking. So if you look at the angle of the driveway, it angles out, and of course, it's been there forever and a day, so since the highway was there. But if it angles out in such a way that if somebody were to use it to enter into, then perhaps my insurance company could be liable. So I think it's in my best interest to go that direction.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any, any other council members?
Same thing. Thank you for answering, Mr. Ward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thanks, sir. Okay, now.
My name is Tanya Powell. I'm an attorney with Nexon, Pruitt, and Raleigh, and I have been sworn.
And you consent to the remote hearing?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to, as you said, there's no reason to go back through what was previously presented, so I have a couple just formalities. And then we have the team here who's willing to ask questions. We have a couple members of the team who can provide some additional information, just some progress on the project since the last time we were here. But other than that, we won't repeat ourselves and ask that if you have questions, you ask those of us. The first thing that I want to do is hand up either CVs or summaries of the careers, and licenses, and education of all of the people who will speak, so that they will be admitted as expert witnesses. There, there are copies in there for everyone, if you'd like to look at those.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if I should note to Mr. Matthews, obviously, he's not available to receive this information, but I guess the confirmation of his fellow council members regarding the essence of the information would suffice, would you say, Ms. Jones?
Yes, he can certainly ask any questions of the three individuals, and I'd ask Ms. Powell to identify again the individuals and what they're, they're being tendered as experts in.
Okay, thank you.
So first, you will hear from Travis Fluid. Travis is the traffic engineer for this project with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, and his information is there in the file. We also have Bart McLean, who is a licensed professional engineer with William G. Daniels and Associates. His information is there as well. One person who was not here last time, but is here this evening, if you have questions for him, is Bob Zarzaki with ECNS, and Bob has handled the wetland permit issues and has an update on that issue, and are we available for any questions? Another person who was not here last, last month, but is here this evening, is David Lewis. David is a licensed appraiser and prepared the appraisal review that I submitted last time, and I'm going to give Ms. Jones that, that report incorrectly referred to a subdivision proposal, and has been amended to refer to the special use permit, so.
Might I just ask, is this document, I guess, different from the one?
The only difference with that document and the one that Ms. Jones is holding is if you look at the front page of the one you're holding, it says proposed subdivision?
Yes.
And it should have said special use permit application, and that's been corrected. And there are a couple other references within the report, but that's it. There were no other, no substantive. There were no other, no substantial changes other than that incorrect reference.
Okay, yeah. I had it from the previous meeting. Thank you.
No new dates, no new inspections, no new data, just that correction.
Okay. All right.
We also have here, and I didn't have a chance to put his information in the files, Eric Wilkinson, who is the architect of record for this project. Eric has a Bachelor of Arts in Architecture from UNC Charlotte, a Bachelor of Architecture from NC State. He's been a licensed architect to North Carolina for 32 years and owns a firm in Raleigh, Wilkinson Design P L C. So, and Mr. Wilkinson spoke last time.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think the question that we left with last time was some information from NC DOT that we have been working on since that time, and Travis can address that. At that point, I'm going to ask Bob Zarzaki to just give you an update on the wetlands permit issues, and then, anyone else here who you'd like to ask questions is certainly available to answer those, but I don't want to make this too redundant of the first hearing.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Okay. If you will, state your name and address and answer the question about being sworn and if you consent to a remote hearing, sir.
Yes, sir, I have been sworn in, and I consent to the remote hearing. My name is Travis Fluid with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, 421 Fayetteville Street, Suite 600 in Raleigh. I wasn't here last time, just by way of introduction, I'm the traffic engineer of this project, performing traffic impact analysis. I have two handouts for the clerk. She's got her hands full this evening.
She does.
So, the documents I've just handed to the clerk, one is an email chain.
This is our attorney, by the way. She's just serving.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Attorney, not the clerk. My apologies.
That's fine.
The first one is an email chain documenting correspondence with the NC DOT District Office regarding Mr. Ward's driveway and the impacts of the widening on that driveway. The most important thing to note is that the thing impacting the driveway the most is the thoroughfare widening that is required per town code on US 70. The sidewalk and curb and gutter that must be put in place impacts that driveway and would necessitate the removal of that driveway. But as you'll see in the correspondence with NC DOT, this driveway would be removed, need to be removed because of the right turn lane that is being installed and as part of that thoroughfare widening on US 70. And the second exhibit shows that even if the driveway were shifted as far to the west, the western property line, as far to the west as we can move it, which is about 100 feet, the taper for that driveway, for the right turn lane would still cross his driveway, and per DOT, that driveway would still need to be removed because it would fall within the taper of that turn lane. They also note that because that driveway extends off the property frontage of the adjacent property, if that property were to redevelop, that driveway would not be permitted today. NC DOT requires all driveways to be along the property frontage rather than extending across to adjacent parcels, and that if, they note that if this site were redeveloped, that development would only get one or at most two access points onto US 70 instead of the existing three. So, if it were to change uses at all, that would need to be removed. But again, the main thing that's requiring, necessitating the real driveway is the frontage widening on US 70, the additional lane per town code. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Singleton, I'll start with you, sir.
No, sir.
Okay.
Deciphering the information here.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, you have any questions for the traffic engineer?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Dillinger?
Thank you for the information.
Same information from you, sir, if you have been sworn and you're concerned to, excuse me, consent to a remote hearing?
I have.
If you just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir, my name is Bob Zarzaki. I'm with Soul and Environmental Consultants. Our address is 8412 Falls and Neuse Road, Raleigh, North Carolina, and we're in Suite 104. I was not here at the last meeting, but I wanted to give you a quick update where we stood with the wetlands permits, because I know those have come up in past meetings. We've since obtained both the US Army Corps of Engineers and the North Carolina State Division of Water Resources approvals for the project. We've also obtained a letter from the State Historic Preservation Office that they concur with the project will have any impacts on historical cultural resources. I have copies of that information here that I can pass on. If you have any questions, this is the ship of the fourth. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay. More information coming, counsel. Questions for this, for this witness? I'll start with Mr. Matthews. Anything?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Dillinger?
Just, this accounts for all the outstanding environmental permitting?
That's right. Impacts to wetlands streams and neuse buffers. That's right. Thank you.
Mr. Vance, anything?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Singleton?
No, thank you.
Okay, you got let off easy, I believe so, that's fine.
I'd like to offer if you have questions for any of the other professionals who are here.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Howell? Okay, questions for, I guess, either Ms. Howell or the others that are here? I'll start with Mr. Dillinger.
Two questions. One actually may be answered by our staff, and it's related to parking, which we didn't get to previously, and there is a 17% reduction in parking being requested for the site below what our UDO requires. It was noted in the report that there are one and two bedroom apartments, which was part of that reduction, and an elimination of all guest parking. And I'm a little concerned at the low, the 1.7 per unit number. If it were even a 50-50 split between the one and two bedrooms, it'd be 1.75. Looking at the actual, it's closer to a 60-40 split, which would bring it closer to 1.8, which would be an additional 30 spots, but still be significantly lower. And I'd like to hear from maybe Mr. Trezenberg on the parking, because I'm just concerned about that deep of a cut in, under where our UDO says, and also concerned that it's just not adequate, given what we see in town as being adequate parking for our multifamily that exists right now. So, I don't know if anyone wants to address the parking.
Okay, I recognize Mr. Trezenberg.
As in, the way I read the ordinance, it's entirely up to y'all as to what you are comfortable with, based on the expert testimony. I don't know if you all have your traffic person here. The ordinance does allow for alternative proposals based on that, so it's not quote-unquote "out of order," but, I mean, I can't, it'd be hard for anyone in my department to say that it's either adequate or inadequate, apart from to say that, based on previous cases, we have gone as high as 18%, I believe. So, it's not outside of the realm of what we have approved in the past, but we would always defer to the traffic engineer at this point until we get our parking recalibrated.
So, if I could ask you, were there any reductions for, is it that, what east, those East Timber Apartments, Aberly? Is that what those are called, the East Timber Apartments?
There's a couple over there named Aberly, and then, there's one named Adeline. I'd have to go back, because those have been quite some time ago. I can try and take a look real quick, but.
I'm just concerned that the deep cut in the parking, I know in being on the UDO steering committee with you, that parking is a significant issue, and I'm just, I think, the 1.8 seems to jive more with the existing UDO, while still sort of a significant cut, elimination of that guest parking. That would add 30 more spots in the entire development. Doesn't seem significant, but I think it's merited, it's a deep cut, the 1.7, so. Do you have anyone who wants to comment?
Yes, we have our traffic engineer here, and he can explain the methodology for determining how many spaces are needed and how many spaces we have.
Good evening again. Travis with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. We did prepare a parking study for this site per code. It will require 540 spaces. However, we looked at the anticipated demand based on the Institute of Transportation Engineer's Parking Generation Manual, which is a resource used nationwide. It's based on counts, parking counts performed across the country at various locations comparable to this one. All of them are multifamily, mid-rise developments in a urban or suburban setting with no nearby rail transit, so just regular bus transit available. And we did a comparison both on the per unit and per bedroom, and for average, a typical weekday as well as a weekend. And based on that, the peak demand, would it be for a development like this, would it be anticipated to be approximately 346 spaces? And that incorporates not only the residents but visitors and anybody using the amenities as well. We are proposing, Bart, or somebody can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I believe the unit, parking count is 448 spaces, so we are providing significantly more than the peak demand, kind of meeting halfway between what's required per code and what we anticipate the peak demand to be. So, what we're providing is approximately 1.7 spaces per unit and 1.0 spaces, 1.07 spaces per bedroom, and the peak demand per ITE is .77 spaces per bedroom and 1.31 spaces per unit. So, exceeding those demand estimates by approximately 30%. So, we anticipate that the parking provided should be sufficient to cover the anticipated demand.
The 1.7 that you're referencing in your report is on page 90, that general urban, suburban, not within a half mile of rail transit, 1.7, right?
The demand is actually 1.31 per unit. What we're providing is 1.7.
So, that's the supply rate ratio chart? Parking generation manual, I see 1.7.
Which chart are you looking at?
That's page 90 at the bottom, but it's part of the traffic, the parking study that was done. It references the ITE Parking Generation Manual 5.
Yes, yeah, so those, you're correct, those are the parking supply ratios, which is consistent with what we're providing.
With the 1.7?
Yes.
And I think, just given our UDO, given what I've witnessed in our multifamily, in our apartments, I don't see parking issues, which means our UDO may be a little, have a little surplus, but is not so out of whack. It seems to accommodate and make room for folks and guests, and I just think the 1.7, I think 1.8 would be a little bit more generous. You can't inconvenience people with more parking. You can inconvenience people with less parking. People come to visit, you can't park close to your apartment. So, that, again, it's just, we're, it digs very deep into what our UDO currently states, so.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for the traffic engineer? Mr. Matthews, anything?
No, sir, none.
Okay. Anybody else? Appreciate your information, sir.
Thank you.
Sure enough, okay.
Are there any other questions that we can answer or?
Okay.
Someone to answer?
Thank you, counsel. For the questions, have we exhausted the information that we have before us? Okay. Okay. Give one more.
From the architect?
Yes. I guess he needs to.
Okay, yes, do you consent to the remote hearing? And have you been sworn, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, and state your name and address.
Eric Wilkinson, Wilkinson Design, 1848 White Forest Road, Raleigh, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've seen renders, elevations. Do these units have any sort of pitched roof on them?
Well, it's a low slope roof currently with a parapet, so it is a, it is somewhat of a flat roof, but it does, there are not pitched sections to it as currently designed.
One of the aesthetic issues, which is included by reference to the UDO and our comprehensive plan, is maintenance of character, and a lot of our, most of our multifamily have pitched roofs, and the flatter roofs seem to suit a more urban style, because you don't see them. But as a gateway to, on Highway 70, a flatter roof doesn't have the consistent architectural stylings of our other multifamily. Is there any way you could increase the roof lines on these units?
That is something we can certainly take understudy, yes. It's a wood, it's a wood trussed roof, so the ability is there to either be low slope or a higher pitched roof. There are three-story buildings, so there are three-story walk-ups, so I do not think we're hitting the height limitation, so we could, that is something that could be incorporated.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for this gentleman? Thanks, sir, we appreciate it. Okay, counsel, the attorney's back with us. Anything else from the applicant that counsel wants information on? All right, I think that's it. Any summary comments or?
Yes, please. I think the applicant has provided you competent material and substantial evidence tending to establish the existence of facts and conditions required by the ordinance for the special use permit. I will point out to you that North Carolina Supreme Court has held that if an applicant has produced competent material and substantial evidence tending to establish existence of facts and conditions which the ordinance requires for the issuance of a special use permit, Primafashi, he is entitled to it. If a Primafashi case is established, a denial of the permit should be based upon findings contra, which are supported by competent material and substantial evidence appearing in the record, and there's been no such evidence presented in this case. The North Carolina statutes point out that competent evidence is never going to be lay testimony regarding how the use of the property affects property value, how an increase in traffic is, will result from the development, and finally, a lay testimony regarding matters about which only expert testimony would generally be admissible under the rules of evidence. And I think, as the town has pointed out, it's, traffic and parking are the types of evidence that are typically, would be required to be given by an expert, as we've done.
Okay, thank you very much, and I believe that concludes all the testimony. Have I recognized everybody that wanted to speak at this time? Sure, for the applicant, that's true, I believe, okay. All right, counsel, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will call for a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I find the application SUP SP 2005 meets the town eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 3.9.2.D. use permits as identified in Article 3.9.2. D. Therefore, I move that the town council approve SUP SP 2005, random metals apartments with the eight site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vance and Mr. Matthews for the second. I believe we're ready to vote unless there's any last question.
A little discussion with counsel about the parking and the roof lines.
Okay, I mean, I think we've heard that, but we can do this, keep it sort of brief, okay? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to add a condition, if it pleased the council, to have, include a higher pitched roof. I don't know if the applicant would agree to that. I think it is, especially given the lack of trees in that area, and it's a gateway into the main part of Garner, it's actually more consistent with the aesthetics of the rest of the town than the low pitch that was presented in the renders. So I wonder if the applicant would be willing to do that, agree to that.
Well, let me ask your fellow council members if there's some consensus on that. That's a view of one. Motion is on the floor, and we'd have to, I guess, modify or amend that slightly. So counsel, any other responses to Mr. Dellinger's statement slash concern about the pitch of the roof?
I had no trouble with what's proposed. I mean, all the apartments don't have to look the same. My daughter and son-in-law live in one in Raleigh, and I just pulled up the picture to look at it, knowing it looks very similar to this, and that's what it looks like. And there are numerous apartment complexes in that, in that area. They all don't have to have a pitch on the line. I mean, every roof in the house, in every house in Garner, they look the same. So I have no trouble with what's proposed. I mean, if you look what's around it and look across the street, there's some of the office buildings, they all have flat roofs. You know, office and retail buildings around in that area, so the pitch of the roof is just not a concern with me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. Mr. Matthews, comments?
No, sir, the pitch is not an issue. Maybe I think we've discussed this in great detail, and they've come up and dealt with every issues on our mind, and I'm prepared to move on forward.
Okay, Mr. Vance?
Likewise.
Well, Mr. Dellinger, was there any other thing you wanted to mention before we vote, sir?
Yes, I'm still concerned about the parking. The 1.7 is significantly below our UDO. Even doing, even just getting rid of the guest parking would put it at 1.75 at a 50-50 split. This, the 1.8 is actually more in line with our current UDO and not, doesn't sound like a lot, but it would make a big difference to how, that additional parking.
Okay, I hear you, sir. Fellow council members, your thoughts regarding the concern that Mr. Dellinger has expressed about the parking? Mr. Matthews?
Again, I'll state that the applicant has done everything we have asked of them, and this thing's been pushed back to the 20th, and I'm prepared to move on forward. We have a motion on table seconded, and I'm ready to vote on it.
Okay. Ms. Singleton, anything?
Question for staff. I know that we have adjusted the parking on numerous projects in the last two or three years because our UDO was a little strong on parking requirements. You noted one of the apartments in here, Rand Village, we had dropped, reduced to 18%, I do believe, also for the Costco project, retail project, we dropped significantly in parking spaces. What, and other multifamily projects that have been approved the last couple of years, what's been the percentage that we have made reduction of as regard to parking spaces?
We were looking at some of the past cases. In terms of reductions, it's probably been anywhere between 10 and 18%. But then there's been other projects that have not asked for it at all. So I did look at the Aberly Solare, and they actually provided what was required without. So it's, I will, I will say that in our, in our rewrite deliberations, I think it's been where we've, where we're coming down with that per our recommendations that are going to be coming forward is that for non-residential, we probably need to be adjusting down. But if we're going to hold the line on some things, residential is where we want to be a little more cautious. But like I said, that being said, we have, we have approved anywhere from 10 to 18%. But that's not been on every project. Not every project has asked for it.
Okay.
Okay.
I have to answer my question for right now.
Okay, Mr. Vance, anything? Okay. I know Mr. Matthews has indicated he is ready to vote. Were there any other issues coming from the counsel?
My only other comment is, the more exceptions we make, the more exceptions we're going to make. The precedent, you're going to keep doing it over and over again. And as Mr. Trezenberg indicated, this is a real issue in the UDO, where we're finding the current UDO nearly satisfactory. So these continued exceptions, again, this, the steering committee's been meeting for over a year and looking at this stuff. And as he said, our residential parking is not something that is going to take a significant hit, even in the rewrite. And I don't think that going from 1.7 to 1.8 is going to make a significant difference to the development itself, but it's going to make a significant difference to the people who end up living there. That's my final point.
Thank you, Mr. Dellinger, and I respect your opinion. Obviously, there are other council members who hear that, and I'm sure will continue to give thought to that. But at this point, I believe the motion that is before us does not include any changes at this time, so I'm inclined to.
Let me ask another question of Mr. Trezenberg. So does that mean in the proposed UDO that's coming back for residential, Mr. Dellinger said it's more closer to 1.8. Is that accurate, is it what we're conceivable in this, in a multifamily, or is that, is it 1.8, is it 1.75, is it 1.7?
Without looking back through notes, I wouldn't be able to, to say. I know we are looking at some adjustments on the multifamily side, but like you say, it's not as much as, as in the non-residential. And then for single family, that's where, single-family townhomes, we're looking to hold the line, if not, make it a little more stringent.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I was just asking if, I mean, 1.8 is 475 spaces, 27 more spaces roughly. 1.75 is about 462, I think, so that's 14 more spaces, so.
Anything, Mr. Vance?
I'm sorry?
I said anything from you?
Nothing more.
Okay. Well, I think we have a motion properly before us, and so at this point in time, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion before us. And if you favor the motion, please vote aye. If you don't favor the motion, vote no.
Councilmember Dellinger?
No.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes by a majority of the council, and the item is approved. Moving to the, to the next item, thank you all for your patience and your time, and appreciate the presentations, so glad we are finally at a finalization point here. Unless counsel is anxious to take a recess, I think we'll move on, and we'll go now to new and old business. And we will hear from our finance director on a very important item, so I will recognize Mr. David Beck at this time.
Good evening to you all.
Good evening.
As you mentioned, this is another important step that counsel could take tonight as we move along the path towards the 2021 bond referendum. There are a number of actions that are presented in a resolution that you have in your agenda. The first order of action would be just the introduction of the actual bond order. So this, you know, in broad terms describes, you know, each, each amount of the bond and what it would be used for. There are also a couple of documents that I have prepared and presented to the town clerk, and we would just note that those have been prepared and presented. And then also would ask you to consider setting a public hearing for the August 2nd meeting, which would be to, you know, entertain any comments from the public on the proposed bond orders at that time. Be glad to answer any questions about the resolution before we get started on those actions. And do want to kind of walk through those step by step, just to make sure we touch all the bases as we're doing this, as required by, by law.
Okay, counsel, preliminary questions for, for Mr. Beck at this time? Anybody? None? Mr. Dellinger, Mr. Vance, and Mr. Singleton, none? Mr. Matthews, none?
None, sir.
Okay.
So the resolution does ask that we have a motion and a vote on each of the bond orders individually, so I would turn that over to counsel to entertain, you know, each of those actions.
Okay, and so, yeah, I'm understanding correctly that there must be a vote on each one separate apart. We don't take any of them together, is that correct?
That's correct, to make sure it's clear before it goes on the ballot that a yes vote indicates your yes on each item.
Okay.
So we need a motion for each, for the order authorizing X amount for X improvement bonds, right?
Yes, you need to vote individually because if you would vote no, it wouldn't be clear whether or not you're voting against the entire package or just one part of the package.
So as, so as an example on the first one, if I made a motion to say, I move we approve the order authorizing $24 million, $50,000 for street and sidewalk improvement bonds, is that what we're talking about? Okay, I'll make that motion. Okay.
Okay, yeah, all right. And, and I guess we could take them in the order with they're presented. They may not have to be, but for simplicity, it'd be better.
But we have to vote on each individual one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so on the, on the first order, as cited by Mr. Singleton, there are a motion and a second. Any discussion in hearing, none? Counsel, I will ask you to respond to the roll call.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Unanimous vote of those voting in present. So the first order authorizing street and sidewalk improvement bonds in the amount of $24 million, $50,000 has been approved. I'll entertain a motion on the second order.
We've got four items, we've got four members here, somebody else can make, introduce one.
Yeah.
I move approve order authorizing $35 million, $500,000 for parks and recreational bonds.
Second.
Approved and properly seconded. So please respond to the roll call vote.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Declare approval of that order authorizing $35 million Parks and Recreation Bonds. Next item, Public Safety and Services Facilities Bonds. Who will make a motion on that one? Mr. Matthews, do you have it in front of you, sir?
I do not have it in front of me, sir. I'd be glad to, but I do not have it in front of me.
Remember, we approve order authorizing $6 million, $500,000 Public Safety and Service Facility Bonds.
Okay, thank you. Motion made and properly seconded. Please respond with your vote to the roll call.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, I declare that order has been formally approved. And the next item, if I'm keeping up, is order authorizing stormwater bonds. I will entertain a motion on that one at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the order authorizing $2 million, $950,000 for stormwater bonds.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. We'll ask for a roll call vote. Ms. Clerk?
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Declare a unanimous vote for all members present, and that order has been approved and authorized. Mr. Beck, did we cover all the items at this point? Am I missing?
We do have one more item, which will be the public hearing. I also did want to just note again that the two documents referenced in the resolution, the statement of total estimated interest and the sworn statement of debt have been prepared and presented to the town clerk, as noted. And then the final item would be to set August the 2nd as the date for a public hearing.
Just before, do you, counsel have any questions or comments for Mr. Beck? I would agree that the next step proper would be to have a public hearing at our, let's see, that'd be our first meeting in August, is that right, Mr. Manager?
Yes, that was.
Okay, and that's what you've been anticipating? So, all right, I guess we need a vote on that, or, yeah. So counsel, if that's your pleasure, I'll entertain a motion.
We set the public hearing on the bond orders for Monday, August 2nd, 2021.
Okay, thank you, thank you, all right.
Motion properly made and seconded. Counsel, if you will, respond to the roll call vote at this time.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Unanimous by the voting members, so that's the next hearing date that we'll have as relates to our bonds. And thank you, Mr. Beck, for, I guess what I'd call all the background work in getting this ready. And we're moving, we're moving forward, and I'm excited about the prospects, and there's work yet to be done in getting this out there and before our citizens for a vote in November. So thank you for your good work.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. All right, counsel, next item of business is a report, maybe I should say recommend a report from our Parks and Rec, Ms. Maria Blanco. So we'll recognize you at this time. I can tell you've been patiently waiting back there.
Good evening, councilmembers. Let me pull the PowerPoint presentation on the screen. Well, thank you. As you know, I'm Maria Munoz Blanco, I'm the Director of Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources for the Town of Garner. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to brief you on the operations plan for the Garner Recreation Center. And joining me tonight, and she'll be stepping to do the second half of the presentation, is a member of our senior staff at the Parks Department, Megan Young, who's our Recreation Superintendent. So just a quick summary of the project, and I know you're all familiar with the details, but a refresher also for our viewing audience tonight on Facebook and on the cable channel. The GRC is located on Main Street. It's the historic downtown of Garner, and it's 40,000 square feet facility. It has an elevated indoor track, three wonderful high school-sized gymnasiums, very well equipped and with amazing wonderful floors, multi-purpose room, fitness room, an art room, an outdoor walking path, and a multi-use field. The project was funded principally through the 2013 bond program that was approved by Garner residents, but also with support funding from the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, the John Rex Endowment, Conagra, and the North Carolina Legislative Appropriation. And with this new facility, I want to make sure that we make it clear that we're not closing the Avery Street. closing the Avery Street Recreation Center. It will continue to be used as our fourth gym, and we'll continue to offer recreational programs, league play, rentals, and have some of our partners continue their programming at Avery. And our wonderful team at the Youth and Athletics staff is going to be responsible for managing both the indoor and outdoor facility and programming operations. Counsel was last briefed on this project in January of 2018. That's a bit over 36, 38 months ago, give or take. And that operating presentation memorialized the priorities for the use of the facility, and those were the priorities that guided the development as well as the plans for how the building would be managed. First was relocating the current programming that exists at Avery with our programming partners, as well as that presented by our team. And as you may recall, quite a few gyms were being rented from the Wake County Public School System to be able to offer these programs. We also wanted to maximize the use of the facility and expand the department programs and leagues to respond to the priorities and interests of the community. Also wanted to increase the hours of public access, and then have the opportunity to host tournaments to expose our young people to more play opportunities. This operating plan, again, is about 38 months old, so it was appropriate for us to review it and update it and reflect current workforce and market conditions, which is what we're going to bring to you this evening. We're looking at a phased opening, and part of the rationale, or a big part of the rationale for this, is the challenge that we have been experiencing recruiting part-time positions into today's labor market. This is not unique to the GRC. This is an area that all our programs are really experiencing similar challenges, as I suspect quite a few private businesses in our community when it comes to recruiting and retaining part-time and seasonal staff. I also should point out that the 2018 plan, staffing plan as was conceived, may not have fully accounted for the increased workload of managing extended hours at a much larger facility, as well as the continuation and growth of the department's athletic programs. And with that, I'm going to ask Megan to come and give you more details into the operating hours, the programs, and the fee schedule that we hope to bring to you for approval later on. Megan?
Good evening, mayor and counsel.
Good to see you.
Excited to be here sharing this information with you. As Maria mentioned, we are planning a phased approach for hours of operation. The primary difference between August and October, aside from the amount of hours we'll be open, is that October puts us closer to what our regular hours of operation will be. Our plan is to monitor that use with the potential to adjust those hours of operation in 2022, and just wanted to make a note that some of our programs and events, for example, tournaments, even our regular leagues, will require the facility to be open outside of our regular hours of operation. Before we move into our proposed membership model, wanted to share a few fee comparisons. I think it's important to note that no comparison facility is included exact amenities and offerings as GRC, and the fees that we are proposing are comparable with market rates while remaining affordable. As you see, some of our facilities that we've listed here for comparisons are similar to the REC Center, and some of the larger facilities listed here regionally and statewide are much larger, either by size or by amenities offered, example aquatics. And as you can see, there's a very wide range of fees and fee structures. The membership structure we are proposing, annual fees for resident youth being free, resident adult $25, non-resident youth $25, non-resident adult $50, resident military, both retired and active, free visitor day pass and replacement cards at $5, and all active Town of Garner full-time staff being free. Those membership passes will include access to the indoor track, along with all self-directed programs. Those will be offered during the day, evening, and weekends, and a few examples would be athletic-based open gyms, free play, and fitness circuits. The Garner Senior Center currently offers a fitness pass system, and access to the track will be included as part of that. As far as our rental fees, both regular rentals and tournaments, we are proposing a structure in line with our current fee structure in facility rentals. The multipurpose room at a two-hour minimum being $70 an hour, fitness room add-on for any multipurpose room rentals at $30 per hour, a single gym athletic use at $80 per hour, a couple add-ons including scoreboard and warming kitchen, a tournament package at $8,500, and as noted below, that package would include access to four courts, including Avery Street, at approximately 26 hours of total game time for each court and Parks and Rec staff to supervise and provide staff for scorekeeping. Our projected net revenue at that package rate is $5,400, and we are proposing limiting tournament package rentals to four times per year, particularly for the first year, as we really navigate our operations. And also to note, priority will of course go to our current programming, and we'll fill in any rentals, any void with rentals and tournaments. Also wanted to provide you with a program snapshot of what we already offer and what will be offered at both the new Recreation Center and at Avery Street. Combination of seasonal programs and leagues, complemented by our year-round activities like after-school, schools-out, special events, our partnership programs, fitness classes, and of course, our open gyms as part of our membership model. As you can tell, our team stays very busy, and this is just a snapshot of our indoor program offerings, but we're very excited to have all of our programs centralized in one space, and even with using Avery Street, will be centralized in downtown, which will be valuable for both staff and patrons. This is a sample daily calendar. Our goal is to keep our open gyms as part of the membership program as consistent as possible. Any major changes would be based on special events or tournaments. Any minor changes would be based on seasonal programs that may alter the use of some of the other spaces. And finally, as for what's next, we are meeting with marketing and communications this week to strategize promotions. We are planning a preview night in August, and we'll have that information to you all this week, opening to the public August 9th. Planning to begin registrations for memberships once we are open to the public. We'll transition in programs almost immediately, continue to recruit staff, most importantly, and plan for a larger event for the public in the fall. We do plan to add the fee schedule amendment to the consent agenda on the August 2nd council meeting. And as Maria mentioned in an earlier slide, there's a large team behind this, and while I'm presenting to you today, just wanted to make note of that, and not only our Youth and Athletics team and the entire department, but other departments as well, like Public Works on the facility side, IT, and many others.
Could you go back to the previous slide? I just wanted to look at it one more time. So I promise not to nitpick this. So on this here, how many days would, for instance, pickleball, adult pickleball be available? I see it's seven to nine, and it's in gym two, so get me oriented to the days of the week.
So we plan to have a consistent Tuesday, Thursday schedule, consistent Monday, Wednesday schedule. Each weekday will have a pickleball component in addition to basketball and many of these other open gyms that are featured on this sample calendar. So we do plan to have most weekdays to look similar to this, with some variations in the type of programming or the times that program is offered.
Okay, and I believe, is this offered over at the Senior Center now? Would that, is anticipated that that would move to the Recreation Center, or would whatever is available at the adult, I mean, the Senior Center still be in place?
We plan to keep any senior-specific program at the Senior Center. We do not want to compete with what they have, but complement those offerings. But our membership pass system will be separate from theirs, aside from anyone that registers for their pass will automatically have access to the track at the new center.
Okay, all right. Okay, yeah, that's all the questions I had right now, anyway. So ready for other questions, or?
Yes, we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Well, I'll just open up by saying, obviously, I'm quite excited to know that we're doing, I don't know if you call this a soft opening, but it's an opening for sure, and with maybe a more recognizable formal opening, I believe you said in October, is that right? Okay. So, long time coming, and it's a beautiful facility, offers a lot of options, I think, and quite excited about it. But I'll curb my comments and see what my fellow councilmembers want to ask you about. I'll start with Mr. Singleton.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the information and the presentation. Sure appreciate it. I know that difficulty in getting part-time staff is challenging, not only in Garner but everywhere, it appears. The membership for whoever, it's just going to be a card. I'm assuming we're going to get a membership card, you just come in and swipe and move on?
Correct.
That kind of system, okay. And I know when we open this, the main interest is the backside, as you come off of Montague and Purvis, Purdue, Purvis. And there's the door up top, excuse me, not up top, the door on Main Street. But I know with limited staff, that door may not be open because you may not be able to have people to welcome on there at this time, correct? So the main interest is basically going to be on the side that was proposed with the carpool loop, et cetera.
That's correct.
Okay. And whenever we have another food truck radio or something like that that's down there, I'm assuming that there'll be no programs that day, but it could be open for people to use restrooms, et cetera, et cetera. I'm sure it'll be incorporated into that event.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all.
We'll be coordinating closely with DGA on any special event, too, again, to make sure that we manage traffic, the volume of people coming to downtown, and making sure that it's a pleasant experience for everybody involved.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. That's all for now.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, any questions, sir?
No, sir, just so glad it's finally opening. It's been a long time coming, and just like things organized, and look forward to getting into full swing in tournaments and things of that nature. Just happy to have this update, and thank you for those dates as we move forward.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Vance?
I would just say I'm glad to see it open. I remember advocating for it, seems like a little while ago. Yeah, and it's just glad to see the doors open, and I'm not retired yet, so that's good.
Okay.
Good job.
Mr. Dellinger?
No, just thank you all for your hard work leading up to this and the entire year. The department's worked really hard, and there are really challenging circumstances, to say the least, and so everyone appreciates all you guys have done.
Okay.
To touch on what Mr. Vance said about advocating it for a long time, as I mentioned before, I was Chair of the Community Center Committee in 1994. So we're 27-plus, wait, 27 and a half years, because we started that in February of that year. It's a long time. It's morphed to the point where it's not a community center anymore because we have meeting spaces with other facilities, so anyway, it'd be nice to have it open. I know y'all be glad, I mean, Megan was hired a couple years ago, or maybe longer than that, to start supervising it, and here we are, how many years later? Have been two years or three years?
A little over two.
So, anyway, it'd be nice to have it open.
I'm reminded, I'm not sure who said it, but I heard it somewhere, Ms. Singleton, this probably doesn't help any, but good things come to those who wait. So maybe this will be a very good thing.
Well, let's hope so, because the wait has been extended about two years, and it was not a our choice.
I know. Okay, thank you very much for that report. I think you hear some excitement and enthusiasm here, and I believe you will hear it also from our citizens. Look forward to some good things that are happening over in that part of town. Thank you. Okay, all right. Okay, let me see, where are we here? We're item three?
Yes, sir.
Town engineer, yeah. Drive drainage repair, bid award. Yes, there you are, okay. Thank you.
You get me, not Chris, but that's right.
Yeah, good to see you, Leah.
Good evening, thank you for your time tonight. I'm here tonight to give you a brief update on the Parkwood Drive Drainage Repair and have you consider award of the construction contract for that project. We've talked about this a few times, so we'll keep it kind of quick, but the last we spoke was in April, when we approved the public-private partnership agreement for this project. This is in regards to a property at 4422 Parkwood Drive, which is in Greenbrier, at the corner of Parkwood and Winterlocken. When this lot was platted and the home was originally built, there was an open channel that ran across the north side. Around 1990, that channel was piped by a previous owner of the property. There were two corrugated metal pipes installed, which have since failed. So the project that we're undertaking is to replace those pipes, repair the sinkhole that has developed, which is threatening the private property as well as the public downstream drainage infrastructure. So just kind of an overview of what the project is looking to do. We will abandon the existing pipes and fill them, and then install a new pipe that connects the open channel to the infrastructure in Winterlocken. We received bids for the construction of this project on June 29th. We had three bids come in. White Oak Construction at $126,000, Naren Contracting around $166,000, and Moffett Pipe about $293,000. Our final engineer's estimate was $108,770. So our apparent low bidder is White Oak, White Oak Construction with a bid price of This is 16.1% above the engineer's estimate. White Oak proposes to self-perform all work. Staff recommends a 10% contingency be allocated for this project, which would bring the total construction budget to $138,891.50. An overview of the public-private partnership agreement that was approved in April and was executed by the town manager and the property owner. We established that agreement based on specific cost items in the estimate, so the property owner was expected to be responsible for any private property-related costs and the filling of the pipe outside of the public drainage easement. The town would be responsible for the work within the drainage easement and the installation of the new infrastructure, which we will take over maintenance of long-term. So the first breakdown of cost is what was in the agreement, with a stipulation that final cost each party is determined by the final quantities and bid prices. The property owner was to be responsible for close to $12,000, while the Town of Garner would be responsible for around $92,000, based on a total engineer's estimate at that time of $103,740. The update based on the bid prices from the apparent low bidder is around $10,150 for the property owner, and $116,115 for the Town of Garner, for a total cost of $126,265. The anticipated schedule for this project, we've allowed 90 days for construction by the construction contract. We anticipate starting sometime in August, and that puts us completing sometime in November 2021. The staff recommendation is to award the contract for this project to White Oak Construction and authorize the town manager to execute the initial contract with White Oak for $126,265. There was a budget amendment done based on the public-private partnership in May. Mr. Beck will bring another budget amendment forward in August to bring that into the new fiscal year, and we recommend a total new fiscal year and we recommend a total construction budget to include the 10% contingency line-up in case of any unforeseen costs associated with the project. And that is really all I have for you, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have or any discussion.
Okay, just a quick question, and I should have noted this, I guess, from the schematic, will this work necessitate the closure of any of a street over there or anything?
They will not need to entirely close the street, there will be a small portion that will be worked within the right-of-way, but it's basically along the, right along the side of the street, so they'll be able to still keep traffic moving over there.
Alright, thank you. Alright, council, questions for Leah, Ms. Singleton?
I appreciate y'all responding to my emails, we've had one of the neighbors across the street who asked several questions and just concerned and I appreciate y'all getting back to me with the answers, I forwarded them to them and I will let him know tonight about the award and construction's starting in August and I hope to finish in about 90 days. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Mr. Dellinger?
No comment.
Okay, Mr. Vance?
No comment.
Mr. Matthews, any questions?
No, sir.
Alright, well, thank you for the information, a good report and I'm sure, I'd like to think the property owner's glad to get this matter finally taken care of and move on, so, thank you and the good work you've done, you and Chris and others, right?
You'll need to vote to award the contract.
Okay. You've heard the presentation and the bid amount and the monetary amount, I guess the motion is to award the bid to White Oak Construction, authorize the town manager to execute the construction contract, is that right? So, motion of that effect, council?
Removed.
Okay. Moved in second, here, no further discussion, all in favor, please vote, excuse me.
Needs to be done by a roll call.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, vote. Okay, I think that was a reminder that we need to roll call vote, so, yeah. Ms. Clerk, if you would, call the roll. Mr. Matthews, could you hear her, she asked for your vote?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, and it is approved, so, again, thanks for the work and get to work.
Thank you.
Well, contracting, get to work, thank you. Okay. Council, I believe I would be inclined to maybe move right on through at least to the closed session, so, unless anybody needs a quick break, we're closed 9 o'clock, but not there, are you okay to finish this part?
We did have the add-on item.
Oh, that's right, exactly, I'm sorry.
Discuss the traffic calming policy that had some discussion on last week.
I'm ready for us to, yeah, take that up, yeah, and we can do that before any break, so, yeah, item, traffic calming, Mr. Hodges is gonna help with that discussion. Oh, okay, okay, alright. Okay, well, Mr. Singleton, I recognize you at this time.
Yes, we had some discussion last week, we had a question from manager about additional speed bumps, traffic calming device in town and I know some said move forward with it and Mr. Dellinger and I had some questions, I talked to Mr. Hodges two or three times in regards to it. Inside, I just, there's a part of the policy, the recently adopted policy where most of our policy focuses on residential neighborhoods and the requests and the hoops have to jump through as far as going through the process of making requests and getting traffic counts and so forth, and then there's another part where if there's an unusual situation that the council can make request as far as certain streets that it's based solely on, there may be some residential driveways and homes on the properties, but there may be something else that creates a high volume of traffic, as noted here, discretion to recommend traffic calming on streets should not meet the eligibility criteria factors, but not limited to our excessive crash history, pedestrian generators such as schools, parks, public facilities, etc. So, I think some of that was the discussion last week, but as Mr. Hodges has told me and we talked again today, is that Main Street really is, you can just put them there because we don't have any volume counts, but we could put them there because we're opening the rec center and we want to make the rec center safe, but we've had a rec center at Avery Street and we didn't put any there, so, it's just my concern is that we decided to put them there because we're opening the rec center, we've had a rec center open for years on Avery Street and we don't have any there, or we don't have any down by the North Corner and Timnasian, which we have rented for years and had basketball leagues playing and also at the school, so, I was just trying to, for us to try to be consistent in how we're evaluating the discretion of putting traffic calming in other places.
Okay. Well.
Give consideration also to the central business district and the pedestrians crossing the street there and over the years, they're making plans about speeding down.
Yep, so, the main clarification, I want to make, what Mr. Singleton said was, the request that staff put forward last week, Main Street does not fall under this policy, so this exception that Mr. Singleton noted is not really an exception you would use to consider whether or not you did something on Main Street. This policy doesn't cover a street like Main Street because the policy is for residential streets, Main Street being a little unique, we only have probably a handful in town of predominantly commercial streets that are town-controlled, so, just a clarification there that, yes, this exception is here, but it's an exception to a policy that deals with residential streets, so I would say that the sentiment is the same thinking, but the exception would be if you have a residential street that does not meet the criteria, your policy allows you to make a suggestion, staff to make a suggestion and council to make a decision with other factors like traffic generation. The situation with Main Street, we've received a number of complaints over the years about speeding, we've received several more of those more recently and with the opening of the recreation center and additional traffic generating events and business that the DGA and others are working to create in downtown, staff just felt like it was a good time to potentially consider adding those before we added that additional amount of traffic and, well, I know we do have other recreation facilities in town, I think this one is unique, that we have a lot, I think, pedestrian activity that will be going to the facility and we just thought that it was a unique opportunity with the good pricing we had received for the resurfacing, so, that was why that was brought forward at that time.
Okay, and I would just comment, yeah, to me, I think I understand Mr. Singleton's point, we do have a process and, you know, we have citizens that follow that process, we have other people who come in and want to talk about how to get that process started, but, you know, Main Street is Main Street and it's usually one of your most visible streets and where you're gonna have a lot of people and a lot of commercial activity, etc. And with the opening of the GRC there, I think that's even more important that anything we can do to keep that area safe and I've heard some of the concerns about the traffic there. I just thought that, you know, the idea of trying to do that for Main Street was not necessarily preempting, you know, other areas of town, but just because of where it is and what happens there was kind of my thinking, but at any rate, I won't, I'll recognize other council members for comments, Mr. Vance?
None at this moment.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
I mean, there is a certain preemption because there's always a funding restriction, so you're always preempting something by using money for one thing and not the other. I think, I, being on the DGA board and being downtown regularly and hearing from folks, I know there's a concern about speeding, however, we need a policy to determine if we're requiring metrics for residential, which requiring traffic counts, requiring all these things, we need to have some type of criteria for this special case. Again, I'd be in favor of just doing it because it's needed, but at the same time, there are lots of locations around town that have been asking for them for years and years and years and years. I had more, another person, Mr. Singleton, mentioned South Garner Park to me and somebody else mentioned to me independently of Mr. Singleton, they've been needing it for years always, needing to track speeds and stuff down there, so, what I'm not concerned is there are places that need them, have needed them for a much longer time and now we're just gonna say, well, here you go downtown, we need some kind of policy dictating what the threshold is, we don't allow anecdotal information from people to get them in other places, if we're gonna have metrics in one place, we need metrics in the other and we need to figure out what they are, we need to do them and do something because we do need them in downtown, it's potentially dangerous, the cars fly down that road, but they fly down all kinds of other roads in town too, so, I just, I think, I want to move on it, but we also need a policy to address it in a framework to do it so that it can be justified from, for allocating this money in this way when there are needs in other places as well, so, those are my concerns. My other concern is the speed of getting the speed bumps in when we've already had some issues with the speed bumps that we've just put in that took a couple of efforts and tries to get them right, if they're right now, I'm not sure, so, that was the other concern I had on the speed of what we're trying to do was the quality issue. The third is the location relative to the pad development that we're gonna be doing down there and the construction traffic that is gonna be, depending on where these are located, either degrading them in an accelerated fashion, so where they're making a conscious decision that that's okay and we're gonna replace them, or locating them in a place where they're not gonna be used in high volumes by heavy construction equipment and dump trucks and who knows whatever else they're gonna use, so those are my three sort of concerns that we need to address in what is really needed, which are these traffic calming devices in downtown, so, those are my comments.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Matthews, you have an opportunity to weigh in, sir?
Yes, sir, I was trying to listen to both sides, everybody's got a good argument on both sides and for the total, you know, I'm concerned is that if we did one downtown, could we do a couple on some of the other areas as mentioned also, and that's some staff would have to come back with the songs, so, rather make a quick decision, I think we should think it through and try to make a good decision here.
Well, and just to clarify also, we've told the contractor not to install them for this round, so there's no imminent decision to be made because our resurfacing contract is wrapped up now, so unless the town wanted to go out and do something with a special bid just for these, which I don't know that would be needed right away, we've already passed on that opportunity based on the lack of consensus last week, so, there's no urgency unless you want to go out for a special pricing and bid, and I'm not sure for a small project like that, that's as feasible right now, so, just want to make sure that we, everyone knew we were not asking for a decision on anything tonight, we were just asked to be able to respond to any questions that y'all had about the process, so, again, apologize for any confusion that we caused, we were just bringing an idea forward that staff had presented and because of the potential with additional pedestrian traffic, we just thought it was worth consideration.
Okay.
And see, Mr. Matthews, here's one of the concerns I have is, South Corner Park opened in 1982, then the homes came around it because Pool Drive, a four from Avery Spurrow to South Corner Park, let me get that straight, it was a dirt road to Buckingham and the rest of it was woods. I used to ride back in my bike, that was the back way to Edgbrook, I spent a lot of time in those woods and riding and doing this, that and the other, nothing was shevious or illegal, that I can remember, but they had been complaining since I was playing softball in college in the mid-eighties about the speeding back there, but that's when the homes came, because from Avery Spurrow to Buckingham, you have commercials running on the right and the left going down, it's very wide and it's 35, when you cross over Buckingham, it's 25, well, most people on the 35 stretch are going 45, on the 25 stretch are going 35, that the police have run radar many times out there over the years, so that's the issue there is the people, and when you've got a game of practices switching over, the parking lot's pretty full, you're talking 60, 70 cars, sometimes more, going back and forth, so, the traffic is there and it is in a residential setting, it goes, I mean, it deadens at the park. Another one was Avery Street, which of course has had the school there since 1957, 58, when it opened, it's the high school, now North Corner Middle School, and then the Gem on Curtis Drive, which opened in the mid-seventies, so, I mean, when we put the sidewalks in there a few years ago, they came in here, several residents, and, what are y'all gonna do something about speed and we get some traffic calming, that's before we had the new policy, so that was an issue there and it's legitimate there also because the police have had the radar program there also and the trailer with the speed limit sign, so, that's my issue, is all of a sudden Main Street pops up and I'm thinking, look, we've had others in line for years and years and years and years and we're gonna put them there. I understand the need with Main Street, they sit right down, that's fine. We also know that tonight, talking about the rec center, most of the traffic's gonna be on the backside of it, I mean, you can't go down to the rec center and park on the other side of the street because there's not parking allowed, so, just remember that also, but I understand the cars going down there quick, I get that and I had no trouble with putting some down there, but the first place I'm advocating for is Pool Drive because of the requests for year after year after year, when I was first elected, they came in here, we didn't even do traffic calming, they just got kind of, we don't do that and that was it, then they tried the policy and that was too many hoops to jump through because they don't have an established HOA, so, the issue is still there, hang on a while.
Yeah. Well, if I'm hearing Mr. Hodges correctly, the, at the time, the idea was, while the contractor was available and out there and that's passed, so, we have more time to both take this conversation and perhaps have some additional ones and perhaps come back with perhaps some proposal there and/or in some of these other areas that Mr. Singleton and Mr. Dellinger and others maybe have talked about. So, I mean, I know you wanted to have a discussion about it tonight, Ms. Singleton, which is fine, so, if council understand or in agreement at this point, no action is to be taken further on speed bumps down on Main Street, but that's an issue I think we'll circle back to along with adding any other areas of concern that maybe, like you said, have had issues that have gone unaddressed for a long time.
Well, what I would hope that we do is this, is that in the, sometime in the future at a work session, talk about looking at Pool Road and Avery Street and I know Sycamore has come up as an issue and another town one to talk about, I thought about, is Fifth Avenue, all business, a lot of people park on the other side, I go through it every day going to the bank, so, a lot of pedestrian traffic walking across the parking, and that's one of the few town on the streets that's all commercial, yeah, so, look at that and then, you know, let those neighborhoods know, or businesses, or property owners know, we're considering doing this, particularly I think of Pool Drive and Avery Street and let them know the letter, we're gonna have a meeting, we're gonna talk about this, y'all still in favor of this, and let them know, and then if they come back and say, yes, please do it, then we look at next year's pavement contract and let the engineers tell us, okay, this is what we think, we need two, four, six, I don't have many, and Main Street included in that too, and then decide which ones you prioritize to do, put it in the budget and do some of them.
Okay, yeah.
That's what I think should be.
I do think you would want to make sure that we delineate between discussions we're having about streets that do qualify under the policy and those that are not part of the policy, so, you know, Pool and Avery, you know, both would, I would think staff would fully consider those streets that the policy would be in effect for, so, you could do the, you could follow the policy, if it didn't meet the requirements of the policy, then council does have that prerogative to install them for traffic generating, additional pedestrian traffic generations and with South Corner Park and with some of the public amenities around Avery Street, you know, those are considerations too.
Yes, sir, Mr. Manager?
I would add that the mayor and I recently had a conversation with a couple of residents in Buckingham and Pool Drive area and even absent HOA, they were gonna try to apply the requirements of the policy for that area, so, I'm not sure if they started that yet.
Well, see, I disagree with staff about Pool Drive, the whole first link is basically commercial, then you have a strip of residential, then you go to a park, so to get to the park, you gotta go through the residential, so in my view, the residential policy shouldn't count because the traffic is being generated by people going to the park, not people in the neighborhood, so, to me, that just, that one goes out the window.
Yeah, I can see that, Buckingham area.
That would be like saying that the residence, the traffic on Main Street is generated by the residents, a lot of it's going from one end of Main Street to the other or going to a business down there, I mean, you know, and a lot of the traffic in old school acres, Avery Street, that area, is generated by residents, but you got the school and you had, you used to have a lot of basketball practice on, at nights during the season and also on Saturdays, so, a lot of that's generated, true, that's more of a neighborhood, I reckon, than Pool, but Pool, you know, the first link is so wide, the road is so wide and it's 35 and it's just zip, zang, zing, and there's no, very rarely is there parking on the side of the street, so it didn't even narrow the streets, so, I like that Pool Drive is not even being in residential policy because to get to this point, you're going through a residential neighborhood and the park was there first, that's what's created the traffic, not the neighborhood.
Well, and my point there, Mr. Singleton, was because you might, could consider it that it's a part of the policy, the policy has an exception that you could make use of and that, that's the reason that I was just drawing distinction between the two, I think it would be good to note whether we're making an exception to the policy or just making a choice, council's making a choice to install them on town-controlled streets that might not otherwise have a mechanism to get there, so.
Well, I think, I certainly would support the idea of taking this information and let's just put it back on. and let's, let's just put it back on a work session. And, uh, we'll, um, I, I think we can hopefully come to some consensus about that and, and give some priorities to that. If it's a budget issue, uh, for another year, we need to consider putting it in the budget for sure.
Right.
You're good with that? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just a couple. One, we need to look at the policy for Main, for Main Street and for Fifth Avenue, if it's not covered in our policy. It, even if the, even if it's just at the discretion of councils in the policy, and that's the policy. But there needs to be some, I'm not advocating for that. There needs some metrics in there for those types of situations that are non-residential. Also in the work session, we should talk about, of funding for this, um, there and other places as well. And I also have a question about the current status of the speed humps that are installed. I know some had been adjusted. And I want to know, are they, are they done and ready and satisfactory? And so we're good with those now? Okay.
Yes, sir. And I did have a conversation with one of the HOA representatives from Greenbrier who had had some questions about that. We had a good conversation last week, helped her understand the, the distinction between some of the differences we saw in one neighborhood and the other. There's also, um, I think people getting used to the fact that the way these, these humps are built and designed, you're going to have, you're going to feel a slight difference when you approach up a hill and down a hill. That's a little different feeling than the old types that you had. Um, we're not going to be able to drive, no one can drive between them like they could with the others. So we had a good, good discussion last week with, uh, Greenbrier representative. Um, and I, and I think they're, um, they're pleased and thankful that there's some changes being made. Um, and so they're going to, they're going to, um, start observing now that the final markings and so forth have been, have put in.
I took a ride out there myself to just kind of look at those and see, see what they were like. So, uh, I'm glad to know that, um, yeah, I'd spoken with, I've forgotten the name of the person. But anyway, thanks for your interaction on that as well, John. Okay, um, council, um, did Gray, have we?
Oh, yes, I'm glad, glad we all.
Yeah.
It's much easier to talk about it like this than put it in a long, lengthy email. But nobody, you know, it's long and lengthy, we don't.
I can talk faster than I can talk.
That's right, I can talk faster than you can talk. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, given the hour and where we are on the agenda, I'm going to propose that, uh, we, uh, we take a recess of about, uh, five to eight minutes and come back. And, uh, we'll pick up with, uh, committee reports and finish up the rest of our agenda, which includes a closed session at the end, okay? So, um, we're in recess for eight minutes, is that? Okay, I call the, uh, council, uh, back into session, uh, having, um, recess. And we will resume our, uh, agenda. We're at item J, I believe, under committee reports. Uh, and I believe we have at least one committee report and maybe, uh, we have a, um, a paper copy of that. But I recognize Mr. Vance, I believe.
Oh, yes, uh, the Human Resources Committee has been meeting on numerous days and interviewing numerous applicants. Uh, we have a large pool to interview. And we have interviewed a large number of individuals and we still have some to go. However, uh, we have made, uh, some appointments, recommended appointments. And, uh, for, for the planning committee, uh, Ms. Claire Fullerton. And also Ms. Sherri Phillips for the planning committee. And, and newly appointed, uh, for the, uh, senior citizens committee, uh, Mr. Joe Cece and Matthew Toop, with one vacancy left to fill. Uh, the parks and rec interviews will be in August, there is one vacancy there. And the veteran administrative advisory committee, pending council members, a review of the, uh, a review, a conversation with us. Uh, there are three vacancies that we, we need to fill there.
Okay, and my understanding would be usually, um, uh, the, uh, your committee reports back to the council for formal approval. Or at least that's the way we used to do it, I believe.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah. So, so you're presenting that in the form of a motion, I'm sure. And, um, council, well, I guess we need a second, uh, on that. Somebody second that and we'll vote.
Second?
Yeah, okay. Um, all right, any questions? You see the information before you there. So, uh, we'll have a roll call vote on the, uh, these nominees that, uh, Mr. Vance, uh, just, uh, named.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vance. And, um, I know, um, I'd had a discussion with, uh, a person who was interested in, in one of the committees. And, um, I know me and Mr. Vance talked about, uh, and, and I think now maybe in this forum and just for the public benefit, there is a, there is a sort of an established process for people who are interested in serving on committees. And, um, you can acquire or obtain a, um, a, an application through the town clerk. And then, uh, I know this committee, uh, works closely with the assistant town clerk in scheduling appointments. And so if, uh, folks, once they've completed an application, will, uh, submit that and then coordinate with the assistant town clerk or the town clerk to, uh, find out when the committee's meeting and schedule an appointment. Uh, your committee then schedules that consistent with the timeframe you're working with, right?
Yes, exactly.
So, uh, so, uh, folks, uh, if they have any questions about that, can call, uh, the town clerk and inquire. But, uh, I wanted to make sure that folks, if there was any confusion about that, they would understand that. Thank you very much. Anything else from the two of you?
No.
We'll be hearing back from you when you, uh, when you get these other vacancies filled, I guess. Yeah. All right, thank you. Um, any other committee reports from council that anybody is aware of? Okay. Hearing none, um, I will, uh, hear from the manager at this time. Manager reports.
All right, mayor, town council, uh, your standard reports for the Garner info and your quarterly financial report are in the packet. If you have any questions, it's early in the budget year, so the expenditures on that are not, um, not that high right now, um, but, you know, we'll be, uh, using funds as the, um, the months go by. Um, the other two things I wanted to report is we had a discussion about the Rand Mill tank and the repainting of that. And, uh, we got some, uh, estimates on the cost of that to put a logo on each side of the, the tank on Rand Mill Road. And that was, um, $10,995. So, um, so if you'd like, um, you know, they can send us a formal proposal, but that's the number they sent us. Um, if, if council is agreeable to that, we could, uh, you know, follow it up with a budget amendment at a future time. But, um, just wanted to kind of let you know what it, what that cost was going to be. And then the schedule, um, did we give them the schedule last time, John? Do we know about when that might happen?
The, the redoing the tank?
Yeah.
Well, they're working now and they're holding, they've put our project last because we needed some additional time. So they're hopeful that we can sign, um, the agreement which we have received after tonight and get that back. And I think it'll be done later in the, in the summer.
And remind me, um, I mean, we had discussed the amount before. I know we discussed the, no, we didn't, I, I couldn't.
We didn't know the amount.
Oh, okay, okay.
We just got that amount, so.
Got it, yeah.
You just discussed designs last time.
Yeah, I know we discussed.
Council waiting on approving a design. We've gotten that design to their, um, their team. They have laid it out on the tank, know the measurements for it. And we've signed off on the, the color and everything. Now it's just a matter of approving, um, the pri, the, the funding for it.
Okay. So, um, all right, council, I guess we ought to have a formal motion on that. Ms. Jones, is that right?
We'll bring the budget and then.
Okay. All right, yeah.
As long as everybody's.
Say the amount one more time, it was?
$11,000.
$11,000.
Yeah, okay, rounded up, yeah. Okay. Give your assent to that if you will, thumbs up, um, go ahead and proceed, yeah, all right. Look forward to seeing it, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. Uh, the other thing is I got information today about the early voting dates in the, uh, for the November election. Uh, the early voting dates will be from October the 23rd through October the 30th. So it's basically Saturday to Saturday, um, which gives us eight days in, um, various times. But, um, so those will be consistent for all of the, uh, the municipalities in, uh, Wake County that have early voting. And I think at this time, it may just be Garner and Apex unless some others decide to do it.
Okay. And that's fairly consistent with the amount of voting days, early voting days we've had in the past, is that right or?
It's pretty close. Um, Garner's had less days before, but, uh, being it has to be consistent throughout, that's, that's pretty reasonable. Because it could have been as many as probably 10.
Okay.
If you had either Raleigh or Cary in the election, so.
All right. Okay, anything else?
Unless it.
Any questions for the town manager? All right, uh, attorney report?
Yeah, report.
Okay. Uh, council reports, and let's see, I'll start with Mr. Matthews maybe.
Uh, none at this time, sir.
Okay. I'll go to Mr. Singleton.
Uh, none at this time, sir.
Uh, Mr. Vance?
I just want to say that on the past Thursday, um, uh, council, councilman, um, Matthews and I attended a, a, the opening operation coming home. And we want to, uh, hold that until Mr. Matthews is back so that we can provide a presentation at the first meeting, possibly in, in August, first home meeting when, when Mr. Matthews is back in the diocese.
Okay, very good.
But I will say it was a great event, absolutely.
And by the way, uh, I think, can we add to that? Mr. Hodges brought to our attention, uh, how this event, uh, I guess, made, uh, one of the national network news, ABC, was it? Uh, who did a, who did a video on that, I s, I saw that, so.
Would we be able to play that during that meeting?
Yes, we should, yeah.
That'd be good.
And Mr. Mercer's put it this on our, it's on our Facebook, it may be on Twitter too, but I know it's on Facebook.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, um, as long as ABC leaves it up and maybe.
Yeah.
As long as ABC leaves it up on their website. And if they don't, maybe we'll look for a way to get it from them.
Okay.
Probably ask permission from them here.
Okay, sure. And I want to thank, uh, Mr. Vance and Mr. Matthews. The mayor was invited and I was out of town and they, uh, they stood in and, uh, did a wonderful job. So, um, I'm sure it was a good experience. I haven't been to one of those, I hope to get to one, but, yeah. All right, anything else?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Dillinger?
Yes, um, I've noticed that I think Duke Power doing some trimming around town. Are they planning on picking up their mess?
They'll come through later. Uh, sometimes it's much later, but they will eventually come through.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that they had some plan.
Different crews.
Okay.
I talked with Mr. Jones about that on, on something that happened on White Oak Road. And if there's a residential property and there's a home there, they'll do it right then. But if it's not, they'll drop it and leave it. And Rodney said a different contractor may come in a week, two weeks, a month, who knows?
Okay. Um, another question is if there've been any recent communications with the county or the state on changes on looking at COVID with the increases. And it's, Wake County's positive numbers have tripled in the past week and hospitalizations are up. Has there been any dialogue yet with the county on additional testing or vaccinations?
They continue to have their, you know, testing and vaccination clinics, but they haven't convened any of the municipal groups to talk about any further, um, guidelines or restrictions.
I know, it wasn't even, you know, talking about restrictions. But if you could reach out to them and see what their finger impulse is on the rise and if they have, um, plans on increasing testing or vaccinations, that would be helpful. Um, the other thing was last week in the, in the mayor's stead, I was here for the Community of Hope camp. And there were about two dozen kids here, about two dozen, something like 18, something like that. They came and learned about local government and they all got to sit up here and that's when things got fun. And the candy got gone, but that was really exciting, so I had a good time. Uh, I think Rick and I think Joe, Joe was here earlier, did too, so that was a good time. Um, and then the last thing, I think I'll leave the mayor to talk about, just mention the fire rescue accreditation, um, that occurred this week. I'll leave that to you to mention since you were presiding.
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't sure how the, uh, how the information was going out in a public forum, but, uh, I, I think it's certainly out in the public domain. Is that, is that true, Mr. Manager?
It is, but I, I was planning to talk to the chief to see if he wanted to do any type of presentation at a public meeting.
Okay, so we'll elaborate on that some more. But, uh, yeah, the, uh, the preliminary news is very good. And Mr. Dillinger was here for, uh, for the final part of the process that Mr. Dixon and I had a chance to participate in. And so maybe we'll, we'll, we'll save some more formal information on that, uh.
They might want to wait till they receive the plaque. Because that'll have to be mailed to them since there was not an in-person hearing.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll have some more to say about that, uh, yeah, in the pretty near future. Um, this, I would just remind council, uh, for those of you who may have expressed an interest. I know the, uh, Mayor Association, uh, for the last several years has had a, an outing. Uh, usually it's a baseball game over at, uh, Mudcat Stadium and that is this Friday. I believe, we probably haven't received them yet. But for those of you who expressed an interest, the, uh, tickets should be available soon. I believe I heard Mr. Matheny say they were being mailed this week. We, have we, we hadn't received them yet, have we?
Not yet, sir.
Okay. So those of you who are interested, uh, just check with, uh, with Ms. Gibson, uh, for, for tickets, all right? Um, all right, I believe that's all. So, um, uh, I will entertain a motion now for item N on the agenda, which is to take closed session pursuant to general section, uh, 143318, 11A3, in order to consult with their town, our town attorney regarding litigation. Hear a motion? Okay. Moved and seconded, uh, by Mr. Vance and moved by Mr. Singleton. Uh, roll call vote on that, I believe, at this time.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, vote is approved and I declare that the council, uh, is now moving into a closed session.
Mr. Mayor, whenever you're ready.
Okay, the council is back in open session. Uh, council went into open session to, um, consult with the town attorney in regards to some, uh, litigation. And we received, uh, a report, uh, no formal action was taken at this time. Um, and so, uh, we, uh, I believe we concluded everything on our agenda. So, council, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move?
Right.
Motion properly made and seconded, um, um, we'll call the roll of this last one since, uh, uh, we've been operating remote, why don't we, for adjournment?
Uh, Councilmember Matthews is not here apparently. Uh, Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
Okay, and the vote.
Is, um, is approved, so I declare that this, uh, meeting of the council is adjourned.